Welcome, anyone. Everybody tonight to the zoning board in November 9th, 2021. My name is Marty Apens. I'm the chairman. The vice chairman, Mr. Cavales. We have board members, Ms. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Ray Dell, and Mr. Himmels with us. There he is. Okay, Mr. Himmel. Uh, we have a few things we have to do first. Mr. Cavales, could we please waive the reading in the minutes of the October meeting, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the October 26th meeting.
Second. On the motion, CNN Voice Vote. Aye.
Aye.
And the new business, case number ZB A 2177. 94 Marymount Road. We're gonna move that to 1123, please, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, matter number 21-77, suing according for a variance to subdivide property and create a new buildable lot for residential, for a residential structure on the premises number 94 Marymount Road. Quincy, I make a motion to continue the hearing until November 23rd.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Last case on, uh, ZB A 2186. 47 Parker Street. We're gonna move that, uh, till February 20.
No, we're the Independence Ave.
Wait a minute.
Case 2187.
Oh, the last.
Yeah, the last.
Alright, I'm sorry. ZB A 2187. And that's 80 Independence Ave. That's gonna be February 22nd, '22, please, Mr. Vice Chair.
Matter number 21-87. Patrick Foley for a variance to construct a six-unit residential building with eight parking spaces on the premises number 80 Independence Avenue. Make a motion to continue the hearing until February 22nd.
Continue at 80.
22.
Second. On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Alright, my, my agenda didn't have that in fact. That's how they made it. No, I got it now. Uh, further on the old business, we got case number ZB A 2176, land form for a finding, construct a vertical extension of front setback on the premises 23 Barber Street. Is the applicant a representative here?
2169?
Yes.
No, Webster removed, right?
No.
No, I'm confused. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. You're right. My God, 2169, James Flaherty, 6971 Webster. I ordered them the wrong way. I think I got poisoned when I was fucking boat shrinking my, heat shrinking my boat. I, I forgot the, I forgot to run the motor and after it was all done, I climbed inside and turned the motor on for like 15 minutes. I think I was poisoned. Go ahead. Who's taking care of this? Webster Street.
Jonathan, do you see a James Flaherty on there?
Uh, if the applicant is here, they can go ahead and unmute themselves or the representative.
He may not be here. I told him we'd take it up. Alright, we'll hold on to that. We can, we can call it again? We'll just see. We'll see someone. Do you ever swing down the phone? You can give a quick call. Barbara Terrace, 23 Barbara Terrace, case number 2176, land form for a finding, construct a vertical extension of front setback on the premises, 23 Barbara Terrace. The applicant a representative here?
Yes, right here.
Alright, Mr. Foley, you have the floor. You're taking oath, please, Cavales.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you.
Now we got all our plans somewhere. We can read them. I understand yourself and the other people probably understand what you're trying to build, but you have the floor. Why don't you tell us what you want to do?
So we live in a bungalow and we're, we're just trying to add a second level.
Yep.
We add some bedrooms, um, and a bathroom. There's, uh, five of us in the house and we have one bathroom as it is and one of the bedrooms is only eight by eight. It's not even a bedroom, so just trying to build up and get a little comfortable in here.
Yeah, yeah, it must be tough. I see what you're doing. You got a master bath with the master bedrooms and the closets and you're gonna have two other bedrooms, three other bedrooms, correct?
Yes, on the second floor.
Right, the master down. I have no questions. I looked at your plans. Now that I can read them, uh, Mr. Cavales?
Yeah, they, now, it, it does help when you can read them, so, um.
Sorry about that.
I don't have any questions. I'm getting older and older. The eyes aren't so good anymore.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, not at this time, any question?
Okay, Mr. Chin?
So you'll have how many bedrooms in total and how many parking spaces?
There'll be four, one on the first floor and three on the second. And I'm sorry, what was your second part of the question?
How many parking spaces will you have?
Uh, we have a driveway and then just, it's a private road. There's maybe one spot out front.
So it looks like you have the three tandem in the driveway and then the one out front you're planning on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray Dell, any questions?
I have none.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor?
If anyone is looking to speak tonight, please use the reactions, either a thumbs up or the virtual hand raise. Uh, turn your video monitor on, give us a wave or send us a chat. Also, if you're on a phone, it is star nine.
Second call.
Don't hear it, Mr. Chairman.
Call that part of the hearing close. I have a letter here from TPW. October 20, October 12th, 2021, 23 Barbara Terrace, case number ZB A 2176. We reviewed this middle for the above reference project and have no comment. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, please give us a hand wave, star six nine on the phone. Unmute yourself, let us know you wanna speak. Second call.
Counselor McCuth.
Third call, counselor. Go ahead, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, um, just wanna speak in support of the Follins, uh. It's great they wanna stay here in Quincy, stay on Ward One. They got a nice quiet street on Barbara Terrace. I know the, um, the neighborhood, uh, they back right up to the marsh, so, uh, that's gonna be a, um, a nice addition for them and, and as, uh, Mr. Foley said, give them a little breathing room there with the, uh, with the kids and the activity they have there. So I'm, I'm all for it. It's great, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Is there anyone else? Last call, call that part of the hearing close. I think it's a beautiful project. I think it's gonna be nice to have a nice one down there. Uh, I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Cavales.
I will be voting in favor also.
Comments, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no, I'm pass. I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Chin, comments?
I'm in favor.
Uh, Mr. Ray Dell?
I'm good.
Do I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a man number 21-76, Liam Foley for a finding to construct a vertical extension on the front setback on the premises number 23 Barber Terrace. I make a motion to grant the finding.
Second. Adam Clark, can we have Voice Vote, please?
Yes, Michael Vaeus?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
Martin Magus?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
These are yours. What are you done? on the new business, uh, ZB A 2179, 149 Quarry Street LLC, Bavarian Special
Quinsey?
Street, I'm sorry. Bavarian Special Permit Flood Plane to remove the existing single-family house and construct four townhouses on premise 129 ZBF. Is the applicant a representative here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm be here on behalf of 149 Quincy Street LLC. Uh, and Ernie Arienti and Peter Debona, its managers. Um, as you indicated, the property is located at 149, uh, Quincy Street in West Quincy. The property is zoned industrial A despite the residential character of that particular neighborhood. Um, joining me tonight is, um, Ernie and, um, and Peter, uh, both in, in addition to them, uh, Brian Donahue from Donahue Architects, who I'll ask to make a presentation of the plans in a moment, and Jim Burke from DeSalle Burke Cell Engineering. Uh, Jim's handling the, the engineering-related matters is here tonight as well, uh, and can answer any questions that the board may have. Uh, Jim, um, has spent a significant amount of time, obviously, dealing with the drainage, uh, and runoff from the site and has already uh, met with the Conservation Commission to deal with and address the issues related to the conservation-related matters. Although this is not really a truly conservation site, it's still located within that district and therefore required, uh, Conservation Commission approval. If I may, just briefly, just kinda outline, so this is a, this property is a 7,200 square foot, uh, parcel of land. As I indicated, it's located in an industrial A zoning district, which, as you know, doesn't allow residential use, despite the fact that it's used that way now. It's also located within the floodplain district. The property presently consists of a non-conforming single-family house and garage with a long driveway that services that garage. Uh, the applicant is proposing to remove that existing, uh, home and garage and construct four new townhouse-style units on that site from, essentially from front to back. The driveway will remain in the place that it's located right now and it will provide access to parking under each of the units for two parking spaces per unit, uh, under the garage, in the garages under the buildings. Um, I'll allow Mr. Donahue to talk about that in more detail, uh, in a moment. Um, just to highlight the request, the relief that we're requesting, obviously, is related to the the industrial zoning district in which the property sits that causes a hardship in any kind of redevelopment of the site. It's also located in the floodplain district, therefore, the request for relief is from the use regulations to allow the continued residential use of the site. Um, a special permit floodplain, uh, in the floodplain district as well as dimensional variances from the ordinance. Although, as you know, um, members of the board, um, the industrial zoning doesn't really provide any dimensional chara- uh, characteristics or regulations related to residential property, therefore, we're requesting essentially the use variance to allow this residential use. Um, we had a community meeting at the, with the assistance of Counselor Palmucci. And although there were not many in attendance, only a couple in attendance, it was well-received by those in attendance and, um, we didn't really receive any feedback or any concerns, um, raised by the neighbor, neighborhood. Uh, this is actually a, a nice use of the site. It, it provides for, uh, as we indicated, much-needed, um, additional housing. These units will be condominium units and available for purchase, uh, for, uh, young families in the area. So without, without anything further from me, if I could ask the host to allow Mr. Brian Donahue, uh, just to share the screen to be able to show the plans in a little bit more detail. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Brian Donahue, architect, Donahue Architects here.
Pick up a little, please.
Sorry, uh, Brian Donahue, uh, Donahue Architects here in Quincy. If you could possibly share the screen with me, I can put up the documents, the drawings for.
Yeah, Brian, Johnny, you can do that, right? Jonathan?
Uh, he should have access. He's gonna have the files to put him up with. Let me see.
Can everybody see this?
No, not yet.
Not yet, Brian.
Everybody has property.
I know, but we still should show the people that are on the people on Zoom can see too with that, getting into.
There you go.
Hey, there they are.
Okay, great. So this, this particular drawing, uh, depicts the existing condition and the proposed condition, um, for, uh, 149 Quincy, Quincy Street. Um, the lot is 60 by 120, which is 7,200 square feet of area. It's improved now by, by a home which is located central to the site. Um, and is, uh, actually 19 feet from the street line and seven and a half feet on the right side. The left side is 16 feet. And we have a, a garage which will be also removed at the back left corner of the site. So the, the four townhouses that we're proposing are basically 1,275 square feet of living space.
This is very close.
Gross area, gross area of the units is 1,800 square feet, including the garage. This shows that we're, we're maintaining 14 feet from the street setback. The same setback on the right side of seven and a half feet and, and, uh, 27 feet on the left side with a driveway and entry into the garage spaces for each particular unit. Uh, the setback in the rear lot line is 10 feet. So these, these units are, um, fairly straightforward and simple. The ground level is is garage, entryway and stair up some mechanical space. The garages are deep enough to have some storage space at the back of the garage or for barrels or other storage for the unit owner. The first floor above the garage is, uh, an open plan for living, dining and, uh, a half bath, so the general program here is two bedrooms, uh, two and a half baths in 1,275 square feet. The units are approximately 24 by 26 feet, so that adds up to about 1,275 square feet. The upper level and roof plan here are showing two bedrooms and two baths on the bedroom level of the top third floor. Uh, these are the four elevations. Uh, the lower left is the street elevation, which is a gabled front, which we hope would represent more of the character of the neighborhood with the gable end facing the street. Although this is a, this is a larger footprint and some homes on this, on this particular area, the street. The right, the right elevation there shows how we're got our garage level at the lower level, uh, living space, second floor and the bedroom space is built into a dormed roof just to sort of aid in, uh, bringing the scale of this building down. And then above, we've got the rear elevation and and back elevation facing the right property. So we're thinking in terms of, um, low maintenance materials, uh, composite siding and trim, double hung windows to match the character of the, the neighborhood. Um, and it's a fairly simple, straightforward design.
What, what do you, what do you have on the side of the building?
Um, well, it would most likely be, uh, Mr. Chairman, most likely would be hardy plank.
Yeah, okay, alright, alright, alright.
Okay, and these, and these, uh, three-dimensional drawings represent, uh, it as the as you would view it in the bottom right from Quincy Street, the rear elevation on the left and then from the neighboring property, the elevation facing, um, facing south, actually. So, um, the, the property is, the building is 33 feet, nine inches tall for the ridge line, so we're a little bit over a foot, uh, below the maximum height we allowed, uh, 35 feet. And, uh, we've got basically a floor area ratio, which is odd because in this industrial zone, it costs for one and we're exactly at 7,200 square feet of, of area, gross area for the building, which is one to one for the site. So that is basically the architecture. Um, be happy to answer any questions on the units or the design.
Uh, it's a pretty building. I'm, I'm just, my, my question is, there's right across the street from that, on the, on the on the west, behind the building would be the sunset and there's a one one family right across the street. There's a couple, two units on either side of them. You know, I was trying to get that roof line down the best we could since we're 10 feet from the back lot line, correct? We're, and we're 14 feet from the front, front. And, and we're, and we're, and we're taking up you know, 18 feet on one side, on one side of the lot, uh, so you got seven feet, you got a parking area going in, so it's like, you know, that, that side left, uh, that's 25 is because they could pull into the garage. The building's way on the right. I just wonder if there's anything we can do on the height. I understand what you're doing for the for the pulling in for the driveway and, and you got 10 feet in the back and you, and you're maxing out that lot. I'm just saying something we can do for the people that live across the street there. Just a question, is that, is that viable to bring that building down any?
Well, I think the, the, um, the result.
I can hardly hear you, Brian. I don't know what's going on here. Jonathan, can we turn it up a little bit?
I'm sorry, could you mind?
No, just in this room, it's really, it's, I don't know whether it's the air conditioner or why I can hardly hear.
Um, I, can you hear me?
Yep, I got it.
So, um, I think, I think to address that question, um, we would look at the upper floor. And if we could bring the eve line down, we may be compromising some square footage, um, at least on the ends of the building. It might be possible to to get this down another foot or two, possibly, uh, with, um, um, dropping the plate height on that top floor. Um, it would result in maybe some clipped ceilings, um, which may not compromise this, this square footage that much in those areas, but, um, we would have to go to that, that extent to make this, to bring the profile down.
Alright, those are my questions. Brian, uh, Mr. Cavales, you have any questions right now?
Well, um, not really a question, but more of a comment, I guess, is that it looks awfully dense. It looks really kind of big, that, that neighborhood.
Mr. Cavales, if I may, on that, on that issue, because I, and I think that it's important to look at the entire neighborhood. The entire neighborhood also encompasses the, the properties on the end of that street, on Liberty, on the corner of Liberty and, and Quincy Ave, which is right now, uh, uh, I think it's a, a barroom, but that's gonna be utilized for a bigger development. I know there's been some talk about a bigger development in that location. And there's also a large industrial building directly behind it. Um, this actually, this property actually abuts the large industrial building, uh, behind it on, uh, on Brook Road. Um, and it, it doesn't abut the residential property in the rear. Um, so the character of this neighborhood is, it's a little different than just the rest of Quincy Street. I understand there are small houses on Quincy Street. And, and I understand your comments about that, but, um, but the bigger area, industrial area is, um, is quite a mix of, of different types of properties.
Alright, well, that's, uh, thank you for that explanation.
Charlie?
Uh, yeah, I would, I'm gonna agree with Michael. I think it, right now, to me, I look at the renderings and they look overwhelming. Um, snow storage and trash, please. Could you tell me what you're gonna do with them?
Uh, well, I, I think that this, this would be individual unit owners having, you know, control of their own trash, uh, and barrels within the units. We don't, we don't plan on putting a dumpster on this site, so it would be individual unit owners with with their own trash containers and bringing them out, whether it's, whether it's a private, uh, pickup service or, uh, some other alternative to that. I think, um, I think we've got some fairly significant area, believe it or not, towards the rear and towards the front, if you look at the site for snow storage back here and actually the front of the building, so, um, you know, in, in the perfect world, there would be larger areas for that, but I think in terms of um, dealing with snow in, in a lot of these facilities, these condominium buildings, you have folks, would, would actually, if it's, if it's a severe storm, would be actually removing snow from the property.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is because of the proposed landscaping in there and also that looks like a turnaround area, so those are my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a backout space from this garage.
Right, and then you have the, uh, you got trees going in back there or what, what is it those?
Well, that, that's really just sort of a graphic to, to show that that's a green area. We don't, we're not married to any landscaping plan. That makes sense to have, uh, a containment area for snow to be stored. I think that could be provided in this area as well as the front. We're 14 feet from the street.
Right, so in the front, though, you're gonna be, there's, there's a landscaping plan for the front of the house? One of the barber building, uh, condo building?
Um, we, we have not developed a landscape plan as of yet.
I thought I saw trees there. Isn't that what's in the, in the rendering?
Those are, those are there for.
Yeah, it will, it will be. Mr. Debona is a landscaper, um, has a landscape business as well and, um, Mr. Debona will actually, will, 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 will create a landscape plan as this, if this matter is approved, uh, where he'll be, he'll, he will be landscaping that front of that building to dress up the, the front. And the landscaping in the rear of the site will be designed in a way that addresses, uh, Mr. O'Brien's comment about snow storage. I think there's gonna be sufficient snow storage at the back of that area, probably a good uh, 20, uh, probably 30 feet by, uh, 14 feet in deep, um, of area that, that the snow can be stored. And in events where the, the snow needs to be removed from the site, it will be addressed by the owners of the property.
You got 10 feet in the back of the building for the lot line, correct?
Right.
Okay. I thought I missed something. Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Ray Dell?
I was, uh, I apologize. I, I don't have my plan, so I'm going off what I'm reading on the screen. Um, what's that, what's that right side setback?
The right side is seven and a half feet, which is, which is the setback of the existing house at the closest point.
Okay.
Existing.
And Mr. Ray Dell, we, we met with the planning department, uh, when we reviewed these plans and they asked us to respect that setback. Okay. Anything that we needed to provide access to the garages.
And then what's the difference between the front as well?
It is, uh, presently it is 19 feet and we're going to 14.
Okay. That's all I have for now, Mike.
Hey, Mr. Himmel, on the phone?
Right, so I'm looking on the page, last page here, where they show the old site plan and new site plan. And it looks like there's lots of, you know, landscaping proposals.
Oh, 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 Jesus, you're right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Himmel, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's, there's already five of us. I'm sorry, Mr. Himmel. And I didn't even ask what the question was, but speaking as, as a member, what did you say?
I, I was looking at the plot plan signs, the old plot plan where the house was, the new plot plan for the four units. And it appears to be pretty substantial, uh, landscaping proposed.
Yeah, I know, we saw it too, but I guess that'll come later, I guess. Uh, any other questions? Mr. Chin, where is he?
I'm here.
He's not on, oh, there he is.
Yeah. Um, my comments are that I agree with Mike.
I ended up getting Mr. Himmel on my screen and I go, okay.
Do you want my comments, Marty?
Yes, please.
Oh, my, my comments are that I, um, I tend to agree with Mike, that I believe this, this project is, uh, too dense for the size of the lot. The setback, the setbacks are substantial in terms of what they're looking for, for variance, uh, variances. I, I think that this, uh, lot would lend itself maybe to, to three units. Um, I don't know what we're doing for, for water runoff and drainage, um, but I see that as a potential problem with four units there.
Hey, Mr. Chin. Uh, any other questions from the board members? I'm sorry, Mr. Himmel, I, I put you in because you're on my screen and I'm just looking at my screen in this corner. And it was Mr. Chin that was in this case. Uh, any other questions, guys? No.
I have none.
Alright, let me speak to, uh, the audience. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor?
Citizen Rotifel. Hello.
Mr. Citizen, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, John Rotifel, 62 Granwall Road. Um, yeah, I'm there looking at the plans. One, one thing I wanna say about 10 Quincy Street. It's a tired street. It could definitely use some, um, new housing, new housing inventory down there. Um, my point being is that use some, um, new housing, new housing inventory down there. Um, my point being is that three units or four units, it's gonna be just as dense. So if they come back and they do three, the three will probably just be bigger. So, um, I really don't think this is a bad use. When I was kind of confused, am I right, Attorney Fleming? The, the things go sideways, right? The driveways, um, it, it doesn't go, there's not four in front. That's why I was kind of confused how it fits on the lot. But seeing that it goes sideways, um, it makes sense. Plus they, um, you know, they, they have the best attorney, they have the best architect, and they have the best engineer on this job. So, um, well, the old best attorney used to be Attorney Hartnett's. He's now the best judge, but now that he's gone, the best attorney.
All right, all right, all right. John.
But, but bottom line, um, I, I think this is good new growth. I mean, we're gonna get a lot of taxes out of this. This is, after they're done with this project, we'll probably have like two point five million dollars worth of new growth. That house probably only assessed for about five hundred thousand right now. So we need the new growth in the city. We need new housing. I think this is a good proposal considering what has been approved recently. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, anyone else want to speak in favor?
Yes, Mr. Chin, we had Valerie.
Valerie, name and address, please, for the record.
Valerie Michelangelo on one twenty-six Quincy Street.
Please take it.
Valerie, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Good, Valerie, you're up.
Voting in favor. It will help clean up the area. Right now with the way the house is, it's deteriorating. So it would be a nice addition.
Right. We're good. Thank you. Is there anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call. Third call. Call that part of the hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW, October twentieth, twenty twenty-one, one forty-nine Quincy Street, case number ZBA twenty-one seventy-nine. We've reviewed this middle of the above reference project. Our comments are as follows. Install survey monuments to donate the public right away. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Number two, proposed floodplain, flood opening ten by twenty inch should be net open in size. No screen, bar, any obstruction can be installed without the, within the opening. Provide stormwater report for reviews. Number four, existing since six inch water main on the street was installed in eighteen ninety. The water main in the front of the property should be replaced with an eight inch diameter pipe. Number five, upon completion of project, ASB plans shall be submitted along with digital file. The ASB plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor, a professional engineer. The elevation certificate shall be also submitted and the property is in the flood zone. Any further, please advise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call. Second call.
Not seeing any hand.
Third call closed. You know, uh, is it a little dense? Yeah, but I get it. I mean, I, I, I think personally, that part of the, that, that whole place is gonna be all redone eventually. It really is. And that part of the city is gonna be all redone. A lot of older, older, older homes there. Uh, can it handle it for you? Probably can, probably can. Uh, can we drop the roof another foot or two, make it, make it even better for the people that are living across the street until, until whenever that place goes? I'd like to see that. But, uh, as far as the property, uh, it's that area. That area is gonna be all redone. It's just a matter of time when. A lot of rental properties there. There's not a lot of homeowners, uh, few on that street, three or four, and then maybe they're living there and renting out. But how long are they gonna be? I don't know. But you can just see the city and that part of the city to me is all gonna be redeveloped. You're right, you're right in downtown. I mean, you're right down the highway. That's all gonna be done over. We know that. It's just time. And a lot of, like someone said, the lady that spoke in favor. A lot of that place is run down. It's just, it'll be a good refresher for that neighborhood, maybe a spark to get everyone to do that. I don't know. But, uh, you know, I hear my board members, it's a little dense, but you know, we all gotta think the way we think and, and it is, it is dense. You got ten in the front, fourteen in the front, ten in the back. It's tight. It's tight. That's just my comments. But, uh, if I had a vote now, I would vote in favor of it. Mr. Cavazos?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you if there was three units. But being that it's four, I'm not so sure. I mean, there isn't for a lot, there isn't for a lot of variance here, a lot of, you know. And yeah, the neighborhood's gonna change, I agree. But let's change it to something that might be a little nicer, a little more, you know, it's not right next to a T station. So, you know.
Right.
I, 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 if it's four, I'm probably gonna vote no.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chin?
I, um, I also noticed in the letter that it's in a floodplain designation. I continue to, um, have reservations about how they're gonna handle water runoff there. I do think it's, um, it's, uh, too many units, one, one unit too many. So I would rather see three there. I get, I get the fact that it's an improvement. I understand it's a changing area. Um, but I would like to see a change for the better, uh, with me.
Okay. And Mr. Raydell?
Uh, you know, I, I can certainly understand the board members, but I, I, I venture to say I'm kind of on your side, Marty. Um, I think I'm in favor. Uh, you got, we got, I think we approved thirty-two units, literally ten feet away, I mean, well, thirty feet away from it. Um, it backs up to an adjacent property. And, and the only neighbor on here tonight spoke in favor. You know, I understand, I understand that, that the board is, you know, looking for, uh, I, I don't think you're ever gonna notice a difference in density between three and four units personally. You know, I think, uh, the neighborhood's gonna get very dense. That's the wave of the future. And we're gonna isolate neighborhoods that do this. And this is, this is gonna be one of those neighborhoods, like you said, Marty, so.
No, and I get it. And I, and I do get it, Mr. Raydell. I, I feel the same way. It's like, would this work somewhere else? No, not even.
Probably not.
Not even.
Yeah, probably not. And, 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 yeah, I would venture to say, I mean, you're a five-minute walk from, from, from a train station. You're not, it's not like we're, it's not like we're approving this with a, with a five-mile drive.
I must not, Mr. Himmel. Right, right. All right. Uh, well, Mr. Fleming, it looks like we have a problem. We have, uh, oh, did I speak with everybody?
Charlie.
Charlie, did I speak with you yet? I'm sorry.
I know. Well, I, I agree with Mike and Russell. I think if we, if we put four in there, we're gonna set a precedent for that whole area. And I think the residential aspect of it, three is a better fit along that street. There's, there's fours down the street with a lot more land, um, as you come around the corner. And I'd prefer a three. That's, that's just the way I feel about it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Fleming, what do you want to do here? You want to, uh, come back and take another look at it or?
Yeah, if, if we could, if we could move this to the next meeting date, uh, that's available, um, and we'll, um, we'll go back to the drawing board, see if we can make some revisions to the plans and see if we can bring the height down as well. And I'll talk with my client about reducing it to three. Thank you.
All right. If, if, if there's three units and it's gonna be back a little, I think it would, uh, take the height down anyway because the backness, it wouldn't be so close to the front and, and it would give them some light. So I think you can keep that there for three units. Uh, what do you want to do that, Mr. Fleming?
Um.
If you, uh, you want December or you want January?
Oh, no, December. I think we prefer to do December if we can and we'll, we'll get on the plans right away.
How about December fourteenth?
December fourteenth it is. Thank you so much.
December fourteenth. Mr. Cavazos, could I have a motion, please?
What was that day again? I'm sorry?
December fourteenth, I'm sorry.
Chairman, matter number twenty-one dash seventy-nine, one forty-nine Quincy Street LLC for a varied special permit floodplain to remove the existing single-family house and construct four new townhouses on the premises number one forty-nine Quincy Street. Make a motion to continue to use until December fourteenth.
Second.
On the motion, uh, happen? Okay, can we have a voice vote, please?
Yes, Mike Oveas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Brian Raydell?
Yes.
Marty Akins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
If you want to, Mr. Chairman, if you want to tag Himmel in, I'm paying a babysitter for our volunteer position here.
Uh, we can take up, we can, we can take up a collection tonight. All right. Thank you, Mr. Raydell. I appreciate it.
Bye. I appreciate it.
Himmel's in for the last three cases. The last two, three, three, two. There's not two. I was gonna ask him to do that anyway, so it worked out perfect. CBA case number twenty-one eighty-three, Attorney Patrick Foley for a special permit to change the use from an industrial maintenance facility to an auto body shop on the premise number six thirty-five Washington Street. Counselor, good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Nice to meet you today as a member.
Good to meet you today, Chairman.
Good to see you in person, see what you look like.
Right, not for this virtual stuff, right?
Virtual.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley and I represent Brandon Bergstrom, who's gonna be the business owner at six thirty-five Washington Street. I want to stress that there was gonna be no changes at all, uh, made to the existing structure in the building that's there right now. My client has operated C Street Collision Houzzneck since two thousand and eleven. Mr. Bergstrom bought this business as an eighteen-year-old man and over the last ten years has grown so much as a person and as a businessman. This shop has serviced Houzzneck with a mom and pop shop deal, which seems to be lacking in today's dealership-driven repair market. My client is seeking to change the use of six thirty-five Washington Street. Currently, this site is a car wash in an industrial maintenance facility. This site at any given time could have cranes, excavators, and other large vehicles on site. My client is not changing anything to the building or doing any, any work to the structure. He is seeking to replicate what he is doing at C Street Collision at this new location. He is planning to have between five and ten employees and operate his business between seven AM and nine PM at night. This site would hold up to thirty cars. Like I mentioned, this site has already ha- held large vehicles on site in the past. The site already has a clean ventilation system, which is fairly new. This new use will actually reduce the traffic because the car wash will not be operating, which had cars coming and going all day. My client is excited to serve the Quincy Point community in the same manner as he has the Houzzneck community for over a decade. These type of shops aren't as prevalent as they once were, are an asset to the community. And, uh, Mr. Bergstrom, you're here, be right here right now.
Yeah. Uh, well, I stopped up there today, uh, to take a look at the property. Mr. Bergstrom was there and he took me in and showed me the whole building. Thank you, Mr. Bergstrom, for the, uh, tour of the building. And, you know, he showed me the ventilate and stuff that, that's, he's got some really nice systems in that building that's all in place for him for his new business. So, uh, personally, I think, I think you have a nice, nice place to put a nice business. And you've been so successful in your other businesses. I know you're gonna do well here too. And I hope, uh, I hope the board sees the same because, uh, you are a young guy and I tell you, you've worked very, very hard to see where you've come. And, uh, to bring on a, a, a project that big and that many cars and everything in both places, uh, really proud of you. I'm proud of you from Houzzneck and I'm proud to know you as, as a gentleman and, and, and entrepreneur, as we should say. Uh, Mr. Cavazos, any questions?
I have none at this time.
Uh, Mr. Chin?
Only have one question about the hours running to nine PM, um, and whether or not that's gonna create any noise or light pollution down there. I know it's industrial.
Uh, it should not make any noise. It's all contained and concealed. I usually don't run that late, but just in case.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, yes. Are you gonna continue to run the one in Houzzneck also?
Uh, yes, that's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Himmel?
That was my question. What are you gonna do with the Houzzneck one? But, uh, if you run it both, I think it's a great idea. I think you run a good shop and, uh, out the neck. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, uh, go to if there's anyone wants to speak in favor. Is anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this project? First call. Second call?
Not seeing any hands, Mr. Chairman.
Third call. Call that part of the hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, six thirty-five Washington Street, case number ZBA twenty-one twenty, twenty-one eighty-three. We've reviewed this middle of the above reference project and have no comments. So I guess what you have there, they kind of thought you were lying. Is there anyone who'll call that part of the hearing closed? Is there anyone opposed or undecided?
We do have one hand, Jacqueline.
Jacqueline? Hold on.
Hi.
Hi.
Wait a minute. Could you take an oath, please, Jacqueline?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
You have the floor, Jacqueline.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Yes. Um, so, uh, nice to meet you all. Um, I recently moved to, um, within one hundred feet of the, that, um, lot, um, seventy-five Cleverly Court. Uh, I'm a new homeowner and first time participating in this. Well, I'm just wondering. So you said the noise is gonna be contained. Um, I mean, is, is, is there any sort of like equipment, some, some type of protection or some type of guarantee? Because I work, um, you know, seven to seven, um, and I work from home, um, and I have meetings all day, every day. And we have around maybe twenty to thirty units within three hundred feet radius of that lot. So I'm just wondering, the noise is a big concern of mine. And like, how are you gonna keep it contained?
Um, the noise, I don't think you'd honestly hear from your place. It's pretty contained. It's not like loud noises. It's mostly hand tools and stuff like that. You don't really hear a lot of banging and excessive noise like, like back in the day. The tools are a lot more up to date and they're a lot quieter and they use different technology versus old school repairs. You did a lot of banging and beating on things. You don't really do that much anymore. So the noise is kind of contained. It's, uh, pretty thick. It's an insulated building with a block wall and it's insulated with foam as well on the inside and double pane glass and the doors usually stay closed. But I know right behind you guys, you have the train tracks, which would, would make a lot more noise than what we would make ever. And it's no different than probably a dump truck grabbing by your house thrown from the shipyard. And I still think it'd be quieter than that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, yeah, that really answered my question and, um, I have no more questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Third call, opposed or undecided?
Brother hand.
Call that part of the hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor. I think you got a nice building there and, and, and I'm gonna wish you luck and I hope it goes your way tonight, Mr. Bergstrom. Uh, Ms. Cavazos?
I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, likewise.
And Mr. Himmel?
In favor.
Mr. Chin?
In favor.
Could I have a motion, please, Mr. Cavazos?
Chairman, matter number twenty-one dash eighty-three, Attorney Patrick Foley for a special permit to change the use from a industrial maintenance facility to an auto body shop on the premises number six thirty-five Washington Street. I make a motion to grant a special permit.
Second. On the motion, seeing none, can we have a matter of course, voice vote?
Yes. Mike Oveas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Oh, yeah.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Right, oh, John Himmel?
Yes.
And Martin Akins?
Yes.
And Mr. Oveas.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll talk here. Further on to tonight's business, ZBA case twenty-one eighty-seven. Uh, no, we're not. Twenty-one eighty-six. Why Chu for variance to convert the existing rare accessory structure into a residential unit on the premise number forty-seven Parker Street? Is the African representative here?
Uh, yes, that is, uh, me, Mr. Chairman, Jim Burke with the Cell Burke Salah. I'm here representing Mr. Raymond Chu with regards to his proposal for forty-seven Parker Street.
All right. Can you take an oath, please?
Sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let me first say it's nice to see you guys. It's been a while.
It's been.
I still, I miss the info, I miss the formals, I'm, you know, but anyway. Um, so we have, uh, twelve thousand one hundred and forty-nine square foot lot on, uh, Parker Street. Um, the topography is, uh, sloping significantly. The soils, uh, the soils are, are, are rock and, uh, and the like. Uh, we permitted this with the, uh, RD, uh, with an RDA with the Conservation Commission. We put some, uh, proposed some drainage. And we went from a, and why we're here tonight is that we went from a, a three-unit to a, a four-unit building, uh, not a four-unit building, but four units on the lot, changing the accessory structure back to a residential unit. And that's kind of why we're here tonight. Um, so I, you know, if you have any questions with regards to the layout, I can put the pl-. So I, you know, if you have any questions with regards to the layout, I can put the plans up if you'd like to see them and, uh, we kinda go from there.
I would like to see the plans, actually, put up.
I walked through the building in the back, uh, today, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
Saw, saw the work that you've done up there. It's totally incredible.
Raymond does a nice job.
It was totally incredible. I, I just, I, I was just really, really nice. It come out really nice.
Have you guys seen, you, you can see that?
Yes.
Okay, so if, uh, I zoom in a little bit, here's where, this is kinda where it was and what we're proposing. Uh, this is the accessory building.
All right. Yeah, the accessory building's in the back, a little.
Correct, yep. And so here's the, here's the three-unit building.
Yeah.
We put in a, a rain garden, um, uh, that catches this parking lot. Now, the parking, we have ten spaces. We have, uh, four tandem right out in front and then we have the six spaces in here from the four units. So a significant amount of parking, uh, uh, control the stormwater. It was going over the hill. Uh, reason we had to go through to wetlands is that thirty feet, thirty-five feet below this, uh, level, there's a, a wetland over here in the city of Quincy.
Now, right here, isn't that where the pipes come in and the drainage right here?
Where, where are you looking? Right in here?
Right up, right up where my cursor is.
I don't see that. I don't see your cursor. Follow mine. Uh, uh, do you see mine?
Yeah, right there, coming down. It comes down through those parking spaces. Is that where those, those two big pipes coming through?
Exactly right, yep. And, uh, and this is, uh, permeable. Uh, Quincy Engineering, uh, would, uh, through Chen, uh, Chang, he, uh, kind of reviewed these plans for the RDA and, uh, found them accessible as well for the stormwater. Uh, so it's, uh, you know, four units on 12,149 square feet is kinda the item we're looking at. And I think it was, uh, the proposed development that, uh, Mr. Chu developed, you know, proposed to build it, made a good improvement for the neighborhood. That's just my, uh, my belief.
It, it really, I was very impressed when I went up there. Here's my question. That accessory building, is that gonna be a one-bedroom unit?
I believe it is a one, one-bed, one-floor, uh, single, you know, I could ask, uh, Mr. Jay.
Then downstairs, it looks like there could be a playroom downstairs, but it's all wide open. I just wanted to make sure we're talking, you got a one-bedroom unit back there.
It's, uh, what, it's, it's my understanding, it's a 600 square feet, so it's a, yeah, it's, I don't think it's gonna be two in there.
Well, I'm just saying, downstairs isn't finished yet, it's all wide open, so I don't know what's going down there. I just wanted to make sure we're talking about a one-bedroom accessory structure, turning into a residential.
Uh, I can, I can't definitively say that's a one-bedroom. I don't have the architectials. Uh, but, uh, uh, the, uh, we can certainly, uh, you know, consider that a one-bedroom at this point, yes.
Well, you know, hold on, guys, because if I'm looking at the plan here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it says two bedrooms.
So it's got the bedroom downstairs, then?
I propose upper-level plan has, uh,
One bedroom.
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms.
Just two bedrooms?
Upstairs?
Yeah.
I'm telling you, I think it was two teams. It was sixteen teams.
And, and that's why I'm not really sure why we're even calling this accessory unit. I mean, this is just a house.
It's a mini-house. It is small.
Mini-house, but it's still.
But I mean, it's like, it's beautiful. It really, it, it, I'll tell you, I was really impressed when I went up there. I, I go, I wasn't in my brain.
Well, like I say, the two bedrooms. You, you still have.
So you're gonna add these, these, I don't even, I don't even know where that's, where that's, wow. We got the wrong plan here. What am I looking at?
On page A101.
Yeah. Parker Street. It's a bedroom, bedroom and upstairs. It's two levels. It's one store. Oh, so the downstairs, it ain't done. That's what that is. Okay. Cause I'm looking upstairs and I'm looking at the kitchen equipment and stuff that's gonna be put in, but, you know. It's, most of the, most of it's secret, but it's still. See, the bathroom is upstairs. There's a bathroom upstairs. There's, has to be, and that, I was just there. Oh, and the upper level, there you go.
So just.
You walk up the stairs, you go in the bathroom. I didn't know there was gonna be two bedrooms here. It looked like.
Two bedrooms?
Yeah, it looked like one room. I don't know how you, I don't know. Those are gonna be really teeny bedrooms. I guess. Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms. If I can add, there's ten parking spaces for the lot.
No, I know that. I wasn't worried about that. I just thought it was a, like a studio up there. When I went in it, it looked like the downstairs was gonna be open, just a playroom or whatever, a family room to hang around, and the upstairs was the living quarters. It looked very small, but maybe, I don't know, I don't know, maybe, I don't know. I don't know, I wouldn't want one of those bedrooms. It's two there. All right, any other?
Apologies.
Any other questions? Mr. Cavais, anything?
I, not at this point, no.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Mr. Himmel?
I was just looking at the plans again. I mean, it's kind of a flat roof. It looks, looks like a shed.
It really, it's really, did really nice job, man. And he's got this, like, around the whole building, it's like a garden, would, so the, the, the brick work and, and the wall work was just totally incredible what they've done up there. Yeah, sixteen feet, yeah. And, and he wanted to keep the building down and, and I'm telling you, I think I was impressed. I really was impressed. Talking about a first-class job from, from, from the bottom up. And you see the way he built around those rocks and crushed up all the rocks in the back? And made that, it was like amazing how much, how much rocks got crushed up there.
Three and four pockets.
Four pockets for his neighbor, right. His neighbor, forgot about that.
Now, now, compared to what was there, Marty, this is, this is a paradise. Come on.
It's unbelievable. It's gorgeous. I mean, I was looking, wow, I didn't expect this, see that.
Look at Jim smiling.
It takes a little impress me and I was impressed today. I thought that was pretty sharp. Anyway, uh, where was I? Mr.?
Approving the project.
Mr. Chin?
I have no, I have no questions.
Mr. Himmel?
No, as I said, he's done a great job. The excavation's incredible. He put a parking space in for a neighbor, so I think it's great-looking.
Thank you. All right, let's go to, uh, is there anyone wanna speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor? First call? Second call?
John Riddick?
The citizen wrote.
Citizen. Citizen, you're up.
Hey, thank you very much again. Um, yeah, I'll quickly just say, yeah, I'm in favor of this. I mean, I kinda feel like zoning is changing where if you have a lot that's over 10,000 square feet, you should be able to add a small residential unit in the backyard, especially for a family member and stuff. So, um, I'm in favor of this and, um, I miss Jim. I thought he was abducted by aliens or something. I hadn't seen him. So I'm glad you're back. Actually, you still.
Only on the weekends.
So, but, uh, welcome back and I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Second call? Third call? Call that part of the hearing closed.
I have nothing.
Nothing from the DPW. Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
No hands.
Hold it, hold it. Third call. So.
No, you gotta hand it the last second, Mr. Chairman. Building, uh,
Huh?
Gotta hand it the last second.
Okay, there you go. Hold it, hold it. Who, who is it? Diane?
Dylan.
Dylan, you gotta take an oath, Dylan.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Is it Diane?
I do.
You do. You're good.
You're good. Is it Diane?
Uh, my name's, my name's Mark Bowman. I live across the street from the development.
Yeah.
So I just had a few questions. So I, my house is literally across the street from the driveway.
Yeah.
Well, that floodwater that will come down, that drain water, we have no storm drains on the street. Where's that water gonna go?
It's gonna leach and fill up there, but I'll give you, uh, Mr. Burke?
Yes, uh, that parking lot, the, the driveway is uncontrolled, I'll give you that. Uh, but we are taking, if you look at the pre and the post, the pre and the post for that, that lot, um, is significantly less for all events, um, by sending that parking lot into that rain garden off to, behind the, the three-unit building, um, detains the flow and, and eventually gets to the, the parking lot. But, uh, not the parking lot, the, the gutter of the roadway. Uh, but it's delayed where, uh, in control and a fashion, there wouldn't be any floodwaters coming off the site. But again, my house is right across the street, so you're telling me anything that comes down that hill will end up in my yard? It should actually, the, the, the roadway itself is, it, it should be a crown in it. So it actually should be staying, shouldn't be shooting across the street. It should head to the, the gutter of the street, uh, for Parker Street and, and head down the hill. And what about the, the storage, uh, space that's now gonna be a two-bedroom home? When was that decided by the developer? Cause there's four, there's four, uh, meters on the house. When was that decided? I, I couldn't.
That, 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 number one, the meter in the house is probably a public meter they have on there too. So the three meters, the three units and a public meter, there'll be another meter on that house separate.
There'll be a separate meter?
There should be, yes.
Yeah, there has to be, there has to be a common unit, three-bedroom, the three-term, the unit building.
Right, then you got a common, common for your lighting and your outside lighting and all that, that, that gets picked up under a separate meter.
Oh, I think it's a great addition, uh, for what was there before, which was a dilapidated two-family house. Uh, my only concern was one, you know, runoff down the street. And then the last piece of business is, that is a pretty steep pitch. Yes. Uh, who is gonna be responsible for sanding that driveway in the winter? Because if they come down that driveway and they can't stop, they're writing my house. I understood, uh, it'd be, they, I would imagine there's a, uh, an association. Uh, it's, six spaces up there, so that they'll be responsible for maintaining safe travels across that, that driveway. Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Opposed or undecided?
No further.
All that part of the hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor. I think you did a really nice job up there and, and even seeing those pipes and, and packing when he was packing there for the water runoff, you quit, quit the job. Uh, Mr. Cavais?
I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I, I haven't been up there in quite a while and I was really impressed with everything that's taken place up there.
Yeah. Higgins, there is a, sorry.
Everything up there is, everything up there is pretty remarkable.
Yep. Whoa, 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 ready. Go ahead, Charlie.
I'll be voting in favor.
All right, Mr. Chin?
Yes, I'm in favor.
And Mr. Himmel?
In favor as well. Great job.
What was it, John, we needed?
It looks like somebody on the phone chimed, had another comment here. I don't know if you wanna open it again.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I'll give it to him.
Uh, last four, seven, zero, two, zero. Go ahead, non.
Hello? Hello?
How you doing?
All right, what you need?
Mike Gilcoyne, I'm at 60 Parker Street.
All right, hold on, Mike. You gotta take an oath from Mr. Cavais. We'll swear you in.
Oh, yeah.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
They, they mentioned that the, uh, they mentioned that the, uh, street is crowned and the water would flow and I don't believe that's the truth up there. I don't believe there's a crown in the street, number one. And number two, there's four gas meters on the front of that house. So somewhere along the line, they anticipated that they were gonna put a fourth unit there and that kinda bothers me. That, it is an extra gas meter hookup.
I have no idea, but, but if, but if he was gonna put any, anything in his garage that could be gas, he could've had a meter for that anyway. So if he was gonna have, I don't know, whatever, uh, and he wanted to use any gas in that garage, they could've put that all in in case, like he was done later. And they probably talked about that before. Who knows? I don't know. But how many meters are there doesn't mean, this is up to us as the board and the people here in this room and their testimony that's before you. You know, if he thought about this a year ago, I can't say he did or he didn't, but that's not gonna change. Yeah, it really isn't. Uh, I know what you mean. I think the guy did an incredible job of what he's done up there and I think that whole street as far as even, even the water flow is gonna drastically be different because of what he has on top of that hill and the way it's gonna seep down.
Right, so, well, uh, your comments are right. He was a great neighbor during his building. But it bothers me that we're gonna have water without storm drains and I'm, I'm just sure it's gonna affect somebody up there and we're not, we're not taking all the things.
Let's, let's, let, let Mr. Burke talk about that because this is his forte and he, he's the guy.
If, if, we, we have, uh, so the existing site, it still flowed towards the street. And, uh, you know, you had runoff off that, uh, the site that, uh, we measured and calculated and we designed a system to, uh, detain, store, and release the, the stormwater to, to mitigate any sort of increase in impervious area on the site. And we're required to do that. And, uh, we did that, um, that, those calculations were submitted, uh, to the RDA and actually, I believe they're actually made part of the record for the ZBA as well. But, uh, we show that the runoff for this particular site, uh, as a rate is reduced on all the, uh, storm events for the two, the ten, the twenty-five and hundred-year event.
Okay. Can I ask one more thing? Is there a way that he could, we, you could make him buy a bond in case none of this is gonna come through for us and we're gonna have a problem? That when, you're, you're telling me is not anticipated?
Yeah, it must have put it in there. Mine didn't have, maybe you can.
Did you hear me?
Go ahead, say again.
Uh, I was wondering if there's a way that you can make the builder buy a bond that if this doesn't work out and all of a sudden we have a lot of water problems up there, that he has to get them fixed? Because somebody didn't do the right thing here.
Here's, here's what happens. They get a permit and the city goes through all their stuff. They look at all their plans, water runoff and all this. And if the engineers here think it's, it's okay, cause that would be the first comment in, in its, you know, do this or do that when they look at all that stuff. That's, that's what the city makes sure that you're not gonna flood out somebody either. I mean, especially when they looked at his, uh, you know, Mr. Burke put it, put his stuff in there, retaining the water and he proved he has less flow than he had before. I mean, his proof is less flow than before, so he has it in black and white. Is that correct, Mr. Burke?
That is correct. I mean, actually, the, the system's been in for, uh, I don't know, for a little bit now. Uh, I, I, I can't really say if you've noticed any, any changes or, or it's staying status quo. A lot of times you don't notice it. Um, you, you'll put a stormwater system online and, and, uh, you know, you won't notice that it's, it's gotten better. Uh, or, or you'll just think that it stays the same. Uh, but if it gets worse, um, you know, it's, it's, it's easy kind of to spot.
Okay.
No, right, right.
My, my last comment is, we haven't had the, the, the concrete hasn't been down in that driveway for this week. So we don't know what the rainwater coming down is gonna be. It was all dirt before, so we know that it absorbs it. Now I don't know if it's absorbing it because that's a huge incline and there's a lot more with, gonna be on the concrete coming down than there was with the dirt. So it's never been tested. And, and before, there was, there was dirt up there when they had the original driveway and it was being absorbed. It wasn't coming down the guy's driveway and the guy's driveway was pretty flat. Sorry, uh, I've taken up so much time, but that's just.
No, that's all right. That's all right. That's fine. I, I just think the guy, the guy has a letter there and this is what he does for his business and he, and he guarantees that it's less flow than what was there before. I hope he's, I hope, I hope he did his job like he should and he told the city that, he told this. So, uh,
Right.
Yeah, well, I think, I think I went back in. We already had the meeting closed. But I let him put a few comments. Does someone else want a couple comments? Go ahead. No, he already spoke. Victoria, go ahead. You gotta take an oath, please. Victoria, I want you to take an oath, Mr. Cavais.
Yep.
Can I tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Uh, Victoria Gomez and I am 51 Parker Street. I am right next to this unit.
All right, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I wanna just second what everyone else is sharing as well. So the driveway is right next to our house. And, um, yeah, just, I am very worried about floodwaters coming into our basement and worried about what that's going to do. And then I, with that back house becoming another unit, I'm also worried about parking on our street and I'm worried about if they have more cars to that unit than they have parking spots for. It's already break day on trash day. We have a lot of issues with our car as it is already. Um, yeah, and I'm worried about like snow, I'm just overall.
Right, right, right.
Sorry, and I'm Paul. I also live here. We own the house together. I just had a, so as far as the parking goes, I know that he had mentioned that it was, that it was 10 spots. But I didn't know that they were all tandem. So how is that going to work for four units? And how are they assigned?
Is it tandem? Where's these tandem spots at?
They're up front.
There's, there's two tandems.
There's four.
Yeah, but they're two and two.
Right.
Yeah, it's not four tandem. It's two and two. One unit, one unit gets two lot, another one gets two, another one gets two, and it, and it could be, you know, that's, you own a driveway with a house, you get, you get a driveway, right? You can put in two cars.
Right, so that they're.
But that's what they do. They only have two tandems of two, and then six in the back.
Right.
And then for 11 bedrooms. So I was just wondering, are the two in the front are assigned to a certain unit? Or is it just like everyone parks where they park, or is it a park?
I, I don't know. That I don't know, and you'd have to ask the owner about that, because I never asked that. He has enough parking spaces for his units. That's what we look at. Is there enough parking? How he signs them, that's up to the owner.
Okay.
Now, if they sell it, then they'd have to be assigned, because it'd be a condo association that would pick those spots and say, all right. How they pick them, I don't know. That's up to the association, but.
Okay.
Uh, I really believe that water should be less than what was there before on everything that I've looked at, Mr. Burke's paperwork that's here.
Yeah, we were just worried about the other side, because I, I do see he put the drain thing, the drain garden in on the other side of the house. And I, you know, I get what Mike was just saying to our other neighbor, that the driveway that was there before was just a one-car. And now the driveway is like, I mean, it's got to be what, 50 feet long now, and at a pitch? So it was just a small one before. And it looked like, from the blueprint he put up, a lot of those water lines were coming right into our property as well, on the driveway side. It just looked that way?
It's not.
Yeah, no, they're not. They're, they're heading to the, to the rain garden. You guys are up gradient of, of, of this particular lot, and, and so you, you shouldn't have any problems whatsoever.
We are of the lot, but not on the road. So once, like, the driveway hits the road, like, we're, we're down.
Right.
But that's just, that, that was our, we just, we already have water problems already. That's just why we're concerned.
Okay, understood. Hold out.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion, please, Mr. Cavares.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In matter number 21-86, want you for a variance to convert the existing rear accessory accessory structure into a residential unit on the premises number 47 Parker Street, Quincy. I make the motion to grant the variance.
On the motion, seeing none. Madam clerk, can I have a voice vote, please?
Mr. Cavares?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, ma'am.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Mark Makins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, Mr. Dupa just told me that there was, somehow this guy didn't, just wanted to go on with this, this, that we asked him to come back because we just needed the plans, 6971. So he, he didn't know.
Huh? She's there.
Oh, she is here. Okay, because we didn't know if we were going to even get her, get her on. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you gotta take an oath. Are you an attorney?
I'm, no, I'm the homeowner.
Okay, so Mr. Cavares, could you swear in, please?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you, hold on. This is 6971 Webster, which was the first call tonight. We held on to the end because no one was here.
Thank you very much.
Don't you tell us what you want to do with your property?
So I do have a small front porch right now, and I do expand it a little bit, kind of like covering the front end of my house. And right now it's about four foot deep. I want it to be like about six foot deep, and then kind of do a second deck on the top. And everything is still going to be very open. And, you know, we kind of just want to do it because, like, we love to put up, like, you know, Christmas and decorations and things like that. And we feel like it'll just make the whole front of house look a lot better.
So what were you putting on is, is a front porch with the porch above it too? And now everything, the rain's going to be able to fall through the second floor to the first floor, correct?
Uh, yes, we're gonna do like a gutter on the fir, on the second floor to the, to the, it's going to go into my own garden.
Right, but, but it's going to be wide open.
Wide open.
Right, all right. I mean, I'm looking at the plans. I just want to make.
Yeah, anything is just the buildings for safety.
Right, you just put, you're putting in left, right side, and then the whole second floor. You want, you want a balcony up there too.
Yes.
All right, okay. Any questions, Mr. Cavares?
I have no questions.
Any questions, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no questions, but I would like to suggest to Mike that he might want to put a condition in there that it can't be enclosed.
Right, it's not going to be enclosed.
It's not. It's under drawing that we submitted. Everything is open. There's no enclosure at all.
In the future.
I'm the homeowner, I'll guarantee that. I don't need that space. We just love to enjoy the outdoor view because in the front, it's where I can actually see the ocean.
Right.
Mike, you pondering that, Mike?
I'm, yeah.
No further questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chin?
I have no questions.
Mr. Hamel?
No questions. I'm sure Mr. Flaherty will do a good job for you.
Thank you very much.
Brother, and, uh, tonight, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Anyone?
No hands.
Third call done. I have, I move on. I have DPW letter, October 12th, 2021, 6971 Webster Street, case number ZBA 2169. We've reviewed this middle for the above-referenced project and have no comments. All our party hearing closed. Anyone opposed or undecided on this case? First call? Second call?
Not seeing any hands.
Third call closed. I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Cavares.
You're voting in favor?
As long as it's open. Still Brian?
I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Chin?
I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamel?
In favor.
As long as we keep it open, Mr. Cavares can have a motion.
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to put in that it's not going to be enclosed?
Sure.
I, I swear it'll not be, and I will be the homeowner for this property for like a long time.
So I'm, be, be, hold on, right? Mr. Chairman, in matter number 21-69, James Flaherty for various to construct a new front porch on the premises number 69-71 Webster Street. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Thank you very much.
On the, on the motion, seeing none, we have a voice vote, Madam clerk.
Mr. Cavares?
Yeah, yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Oh, yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes, I'm in favor.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Ari E.
Yes. If, if you guys, I just want John and you guys to talk a minute about what we can do maybe to make this a little better if we're going to be doing this. If you can hang in for two minutes after the meeting.
Me?
I just want to see if.
No, you're all set.
You're all set.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're all set, thank you.
We're just trying to find out, like, it's, it's, we'll, we'll, it'll take two minutes to talk it out. Couple questions, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Make a motion to, uh.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All set.